Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, everyone. I know that compliance here has a lot to cover and Mr. Fountain and I discussed this a little earlier and his approach is going to be fairly unique and I think that, were you expecting us to ask questions as you went back and forth or do you want to do your whole presentation and then take questions?
Mr. Chairman through you, I'll be happy to answer questions as we go through it. I just wanted to make a point of clarification that we had it lined out within the agenda, but I, for the purposes of the budget, I'd like to be able to go back and forth, but if you want to stop me in that process, I'll be happy to answer those questions.
Well, I think generally as we progressed here, we have heard the full presentation and then asked questions, but obviously, any important points that you want to make as we go along would be fine. I want to emphasize something here that's kind of embarrassing, but true. My allergies are acting up and my hearing aids have failed. So I think it's very important that we all speak into the microphone and make sure that we can hear and the recording will be good, but I sure wish that wouldn't have happened. It hasn't happened before, but so be it. Mr. Fountain?
We'll make sure you can hear us, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Council. On behalf of the Compliance Department, I would like to thank you for your support and participation in the department development. We're very thankful for the support and understanding as we build the best practices for one city, one standard. I'll be taking you through our budget presentation, but first I'd like to lay some foundation part of diving into the budget changes respectfully. We have six pillars of vested interest and philosophy that lend support to our daily actions of this department. Five years ago, we began working under the guise of intent-based leadership and today we operate with four key lead positions in our management team. We have six areas I'd like to cover today, one of those being leadership and staff development, data applied to the daily operation, performance management and staff support and constituent support, program evaluation where we meet the metrics and develop the processes for the delivery, and policy and code by design, and the capabilities of social problem solving, community issues. We use data effectively to diagnose problems, identify solutions, and measure progress to determine success. We strive to improve effectiveness, equity, and accountability in the city government by managing performance, building data fluency, and creating the conditions for data-informed decisions. Examining potential barriers of problem-oriented government action by learning how to diagnose the problems using the data that we retrieve and to start to tackle large-scale problems such as homelessness, abandoned vehicles, animal welfare, and community construction. We identify and testing the effectiveness of the business practices and policies to improve talent management within the city, both in the recruitment and the staff retention. Some of the high points from our conversation today will be the completion of the citywide safety plan reviewed by the mayor, city departments, the chief of staff, and the city attorney. We've implemented and developed the safety committee, implemented the root cause training, implemented multi-factor authentication, and on June 9th, the building department, after three years of dedicated service and development, will implement the Open Gov experience. We've continued work and partnerships with risk management, creating a citywide continuity plan in conjunction with the partners at EMA, FEMA, and CISA. The building department completed the annual ICC training. It's a two-day responsibility which supports individual goals and citywide training needs. The chief building official, the deputy, the operations are now working with WAFTA, which is the Wyoming Association of Fire Merchals. And the building department continues education credits and ICC memberships to continue to be voting members of the panel for the code review. Other internal certifications are the NACA III certification where the animal control operation is the only one in the state of Wyoming that sits at a Level III NACA certification. Reminding you, we've only had that department for two years. Building inspectors are at the master level building inspector certification and we've been deemed as the gold standard applied by large data center projects. That is a huge accomplishment on behalf of that building team. We are the AHJ, meaning we have the authority of jurisdiction. We do not rely on other divisions or other state entities to tell us how to operate our business. We stay within their codes and their standards and they do not have to have oversight over us. We operate independently. Safety completed OSHA 2350, expanded health standards. That is huge for your city. Never had that before. You have that now. Nuisance and animal control completed code enforcement safety officer training, 15 hours of tactical mindset, fear management, de-escalation, and the three pivot phases of encounters. That was a request of this council last year and we've delivered that. And then finally, our permit tics obtained their ICC certification. I'll ask you to join me on page 11 of the budget book. And Mr. Laborne, I'll join you in the sniffles. I apologize, it's allergy season, so I am not sick, I just have some allergies going on here. I've worked directly with the city treasurer and getting you folks some answers. There was a question about the compliance line and you see you have animal control, then it said building, risk, nuisance, and then information technology. There's actually what we have identified as seven specifics. We'll be able to take care of that and make it more clear for you for transparency when we implement the new Open Gov processes within the treasurer's department. They are working towards that and they've identified that and they will help us navigate that. But we break it out, we'll have animal control, the building department, risk, safety, and then administration. What we're going to do at this time is jump to page 30, and this is where general fund payroll comparison is located. And the reason I wanted to take this opportunity is because it ties directly in to risk management and safety and how we operate. As you know, Marilyn Sutherland is our primary and I am your secondary for the warm board. We serve on that board in making determinations regards to your warm policies and procedures, working in terms of purchasing insurance both for the liability and for the pool. And so the reason I wanted to talk a little bit about this particular page is because your liability rates are based on two factors. One, it is based on the number of FTEs and the payroll for the city of Cheyenne. And for two, it is the number of claims that you have within the liability operation and then going back to the insurance. Your insurance is not warm, your insurance is alliant, but warm is the pool that we belong to. And we're talking about that because here in a few moments, we're going to bring that slide up and I want to share with you why you didn't see such an impactful increase even though we know that across the country, national insurances are seeing massive rate adjustments based on fires, floods, tornadoes, hurricanes, earthquakes. We're not experiencing it at that level and we'll talk about that here briefly. Liability did see an increased amount of $73,000 this year. And again, you can compare that because if you look at '23, '24, '25, and now as a projected opportunity in '26, your payroll has gone up, but also have, your claims have also gone up. And so that tier demonstrates that we would see an increase in that line item. The next one is your actual liability claims paid and reserved. When we say a claim is paid and reserved, you have to understand that you have two years because of the Governmental Claims Act, there are two years in which they can come back and file a claim. We may not see it in this year's budget, something that happens. A good example would be we had an accident that happened over three years ago. It finally came through fruition, it's in there, the money was reserved, and so now there's the action being taken. What you have before you shows you that there are 18 items either claimed, paid, or reserved. But what I provided to you just yesterday or the day before was that we have 30 claims and that's because some of those things are coming in. So that number is a very moving target. It's never a real number, but it's a number you have to keep in mind in terms of your operation. And so what you see is Cheyenne being the highest and we are still the highest in liability claims. What our goal is to do is to take the two new safety officers and do our very best in creating a new safety culture and really driving home the new safety plan and implementing OSHA's best practices and standards and expecting that our partners, other directors, and other team members within the city of Cheyenne really strives to bring that down. What we do know is that our payroll is not going to go down. And as we grow as a community, annexing in other properties, large developments, et cetera, that is going to see a need for continued staffing and you guys have been very good to us in making sure that we can deliver that as a service model. I can tell you when I took this department, we were very, very small with a very big expectation and we appreciate that support. But those are the reasons for those numbers and I think it's important that you understand that. If I look at the property side of this, the important thing to understand there too is that we take a look at your total insured value, your TIV, and then we look at a 5% loss ratio. So when you have the 5%, that's the lowest level. There are tiers that you could have to pay if you exceeded those amounts of claims, the number and the dollar amount of claims, which is a dollar amount. We stay at a 5%, which is really good. The nice thing in this particular, which is very unheard of, is we saw a decrease in the property premium. So if you take the property and the liability premium, it was a $7,000 savings. We did not do a buy-down, so for those of you who don't understand that process, the buy-down is where we look at what we currently purchase. So if we purchased $13 million worth of cyber coverage or $13 million of claims coverage, then we would reduce that. We currently purchased $16 million. We chose to stay there. So we did not take a reduction there and we did not take a reduction in any of our other lines. So there was no buy-down and it's a flat surface number. And that is very good. That's very good. And I think what you have to understand though is look at, look at the pool, the health of your warm pool, because it's the other communities that are carrying us. We're the number one in those claims. We have to get that down. And I think as we work towards that, we will get there. We've also implemented some support to another division here at the city. They brought in an outside services to train on some of those things. I believe we're moving in the right direction and I believe we can move that needle to decrease those claims. The next page I'd like to look at would be page 32 of the budget book. This is where we cover our staffing. We are a department of 38.5. That is a part-time plans examiner and 38 full-time employees. We operate at a 20% turnover rate, which is unheard of. Most of our staff is very happy and very dedicated to the work and service model that we deliver. Within that though, you have a deputy director, which is Marilyn Sutherland, she's to my left, and then you have Paul Schlatter, who is joining the table with Treasurer Lockman, and Paul is our administrator. We also have two other administrators, which is our IT Division Director, which is Tyler Nelson, and we have our Chief Building Official, who is Anthony Ortono Parmalu. Outside of that, these are all boots-on-the-ground employees. There are no managers, there are no foremans, and there are very few supervisors. We are not a top-heavy organization, we are a boots-on-the-ground organization and I often liken that what we do is, all of us, all of us are employees. It's not beneath me to go out and be an animal control officer. Director Sutherland has done the same thing. Mr. Schlatter has helped with the cleanups, the large cleanups and the abandoned camps. And so we utilize all of our services across the board to demonstrate the intent-based leadership and to support that intent, to understand what our employees are actually going through every single day. And I think that lends to the very low turnover rate because we are all a team. I might be a title as director, but I'm just an employee like the rest of them. Within that employee count, we have two in administration, five for nuisance, two for safety, five for animal control, six for IT, and there's 18.5 in building. This governing body and this administration have been very supportful of the staffing needs for the building department. When we took on some of the larger projects, one of them actually said, "We don't believe that Cheyenne has the staffing abilities or the experience abilities to bring these projects to fruition." We have done that. We are the gold standard and we'll continue to do that. The mayor has given us the authority and the door to come to him, always open to say, you know, "We need additional staffing, we know we got more data centers coming, we know we have larger projects, thousand-acre developments in conversation," and he allows us to get ahead of those conversations. We talked briefly about the master level certification and that is just unheard of as well in municipalities. We were able to attract and retain because we paid in a competitive market. As we go forward though, most recently, we did experience the loss of two for our succession plan, one within a actual building background and one in an HVAC background. Losing that type of experience is really hard to recapture and the competitive market is paying more aggressively on the outside. But we have to do what we can to continue to support that mission and we have been backfilling as fast as we possibly can every time a position comes open and continuing to support the education process to get them to where they need to be so we can continue with that gold standard and continue with that master level as well as with our techs, the ICC III level. And so thank you for that support. The next page would be page 62, and I just want to briefly cover this, where it demonstrates the expenditures by the compliance department. And we look back to '23 and think that a $3.5 million budget is really what we were driving. And today, we look at our budget, where we're currently at, and then what we're forecasting going forward. As with any other budget and any other department that has done their presentation, you find that most often, most of those expenses strictly are surrounded by staffing needs and the salaries associated along with the benefits. For us, it's also been though, the acquisition of vehicles, phones, desks, and space. And we appreciate, although it was painful, we appreciate the space that we're in. If for some reason we were to grow again somehow, we would be at capacity within two employees. So we are utilizing the space that we have, but because of the growth in the community and the pace that we're growing at, it does happen in a rapid movement, but we are much, again, appreciative of what you guys have done for us in all of those asks. We'll go to page 71 where it talks a little bit about general fund revenues. And this is where I think it lends to that support. When you talk about the generators, the revenue generators for a community, the building permits and the building licenses create 4% of that. They are in the top five for revenue generated for the city of Cheyenne, contributing directly to the general fund. And so it's imperative that we continue to provide those services, continue to staff at the leveling needs where we're meeting those standards, because if you get into that, you start to mess with this metrics as well and it takes apart a lot of other things. But our building department understands that they are the big driver for our department as well as a big driver for the community, but bigger yet, it's how we represent the constituency. It's how we represent the future of the growth and where we're growing. We'll go to page 72 where we forecast $3 million in projected revenues. I know that some folks had had a question about why is it only $3 million when we know by the slide demonstrated up before you today and within the packet that we provided, that we see $11 million already in building revenue and we know that last year was a very healthy year as well. Well, we don't want to project with those type of projects into long-term projections. What we know is 2.5 to 3.5 million seems to be the benchmark standard in terms of revenues coming in from the building department, but these larger projects very well could be one time. And I want to remind you that there was a period of time when we did budget and we did forecast for a large-scale project that was going to be going into sweetgrass. We put that in the budget and that project didn't come to fruition and we recognized that and we've seen that within those budget numbers. We don't want to overforecast and we don't want to miss our target and so that's why we're conservative in that thought process and this governing body and the mayor have done a fantastic job along with the treasurer in ensuring that we're making the right decisions when it comes to the long-range planning and the vision of the budget within itself. So now we arrive to page 110 and this is where you'll see the building, risk, and nuisance division in terms of the structure and the requests that we have that would change from '25 and '26 from '23 and '24. The building and risk division increased $539,000 from fiscal year 2025 to year 2026. What you see in there is the professional development increased by $2,000. Respectfully, it goes back to staffing. Dues and subscriptions, respectfully, ties back to staffing. Junk vehicle towing, we had to increase that line item by $25,000. We had done multiple transfers. Was it three we had at that time? We've done three transfers from other line items so that we could support that mission that this council wanted to have and that was not allowing junk vehicles on properties, on streets, trying our best to clean that up and insist in that, but it's a very expensive venture, just so you're aware. So we're asking for an additional $25,000 there. Our printing increased by 1,000, ties back to additional staffing. Copier expenses, 500 bucks, better aligned with the budget usage rate, and I think Treasurer Lockman for that, she is fantastic. I appreciate her on so many different levels for all that she does for this community. Our office supplies, $1,000, again accommodating those new hire needs. Clothing is the same thing with $2,700. And then memorials and trophies, $100 in recognition of the board that serves as your contractor licensing board and does a great job in ensuring that people get licensed and that we're meeting the benchmark standards for the community. Do you want me to go through all of them, Mr. Laborne, or stop there and then we can jump into the nuisance and into IT and animal control? This would be a good stopping point, I think, if you had questions, but Mr. Chairman, I would leave that to you, sir.
Looks like Mr. Royball has a question. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. How many cars did we tow last year?
Give me one second, sir. You would think I'd have that number like right off the top of my head. Mr. Schlatter? Over 200, sir.
Do we, do we see that as a trend or do we see that as a first time, first year doing it type thing?
Mr. Chairman through you to Councilman Royball and I apologize for that error earlier. We, it's hard to forecast that right now because here's what we know. As soon as we came out with the camper ordinance and said, you know, "You're going to have to take your campers to storage," social media platform went to everybody saying, "Here's a free camper. Come get this camper for $500. Come get this camper for $200." Immediately following that, we were flooded again. So junk vehicles and campers are very unpredictable. It really kind of ebbs and flows with the financial well-being of a community, if you will. I think that sometimes you can, you can try your best to pen that market and say that, you know, "Yeah, we're going to see a decrease because we've cleaned so many up," but really and truly, when you look at the map that we're going to show you here shortly, it's just the tip of the iceberg. You're literally just getting started.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Would it be, I don't know, what does it cost for us to tow a vehicle?
Mr. Chairman through you to Councilman Royball. So it varies. We can see it anywhere from $150. We've had some tow bills, you know, $700, $800. And quite frankly, it depends on the type of vehicle and how long it's been sitting. So we did tow a camper, had been there for a very lengthy amount of time. The tree had actually started to grow through the hitch area. So that, that right there just tells you that, you know, it's really hard to give you a target number on that, but it's safe to say that we felt comfortable in knowing we're going to spend somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 towing vehicles probably for the next three to four years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Chairman through you. Director Fountain, have you ever looked at the ROI on the building division for the community?
Mr. Chairman through you to Dr. Emmons. Yes, we monitor those things very closely and that, I think that's what the mayor asks of us as well in terms of when we look at staffing, when we look at the benefits associated with that. You know, there was a time when we looked at an outside service to do some of the plans examination, to do some of those inspections. What we quickly learned was that when you bring in an outside to support that mission versus bringing him directly on, so the return on investment, if you look at it and you say, "Geez, let's go outsource that," what we find is most of those people coming in, they're not at the master level certification. In fact, what we experienced was they weren't certified at all. They sent us people that were not certified to work in our jurisdiction and that's not something that we want to set for the community. The other part of that return on investment is that we, what we know is that if we're annexing property and we're taking the stance of the one city, one standard that Mr. Laborne refers to often and trying to bring everybody into compliance, that, that return can only be successful and healthy as the presence of your community and the services that you can provide. So the investment that we make within our staff, the investment that we make back to the constituency, the investment that we continue to make while they're employed by the city of Cheyenne, and then looking at the large-scale projects, I don't believe we would have those projects if we weren't monitoring that.
Mr. Chairman through you. I would agree completely and it would seem like the investment that you all, that the city makes in what you do would be, I mean, it'd be very interesting to know how many fold times that is for the community. And then my other question would be, how do you, or is there a way to anticipate when we do have large projects coming in, how many additional staff or hours you need to budget for to try to meet those needs?
So, Mr. Chairman, again through you to Dr. Emmons. We do that, ma'am. I think what we can do for you is give you a little bit more hard number in the next couple of days, but really looking back at it, what we've learned and what we understand is that it really comes down to the acreage and then the square foot of the opportunity and then it looks at what kind of an opportunity is going in there. It's very different if we were to say, you know, "Hey, we're going to have a thousand-acre, 1,200-square-foot sub-development" versus a data center development. Those are very different plan sets, they're very different in terms of inspections, they're very different in terms of long-term commitments. And so I think that's, that's what we want to look at. You're correct in that the, it's manyfold over, many, manyfold over in terms of what we actually spend on staffing and training and additional equipment to perform those duties and functions versus the permit, very different conversations. It's manyfold over. But you also have to understand that we're looking at the long-term investments, parks included in those conversations, streets, curbs, gutters, alleys, all of that operation funds those for future generations. And so that's what you have to really kind of expand upon when you start looking at the return on investment.
Mr. Escobell?
Mr. Chair through you. Director Fountain, on the risk management and the liability claims, is the one with the water main in Cahill Park, is that one still ongoing?
Mr. Chairman through you. The simple answer is yes and, and because we, we have pending litigation in that, that's about as far as I would go, sir. But yes, there is pending litigation and yes, that is part of the claim reserved that you're seeing today.
Okay, and then through you, Mr. Chair. Do we hear from other communities about the number of incidents we have?
Mr. Chairman through you to Councilman Escobell. The simple answer is yes. Because Marilyn is the primary on the board and I'm the secondary, we attend all the warm board meetings. The other members of the pool have had grave concerns with our number of claims. Our partners in Casper, our partners in Gillette are super-understanding and super-supportive. They've given us a lot of good ideas of things that we can implement, giving us ideas in terms of what we need to do in terms of staffing and how we look at that. And most recently, the chief of staff even had mentioned that she thought maybe a risk manager, a full-time risk management manager on the team might behoove us in some fashion. The folks that are members of the pool also understand though that we are the largest, we have the greatest operation, and we have the most employees. At the same time, some of the incidents and accidents that we have, they really feel were preventable. And so that is why the implementation of the new safety plan, the safety committee, the two safety officers, and I, I know that you've always understood that we had one safety officer position, but what we did was we initially had a building tech position that we moved to an animal control position because we were expecting a newborn within our operation and we knew we were going to have a person go out on maternity, so we staffed accordingly through attrition. And then now we've identified that we really have a need within our safety culture and so we've shifted to two safety officers, being able to be more visible and start to really dive into toolbox talks, having main team topics, developing relationships with workforce services and OSHA and, and moving in that direction. And so we are creating that culture. Again, I do believe, like I've asked this council before, to give us a little bit of time to develop this. We've kind of always put the risk management and the safety on the back burner because we felt like it was managing itself to a degree, but what we're noticing and what we're feeling and we're experiencing nationally, I think it's time to give it a little bit of support. And so again, I identify, my team identifies with the intent-based leadership, that this is probably a good decision for us and we made that decision and moved in that direction. And I think we're going to be able to support some of those concerns.
Well, Mr. Chair, through you, I'm glad to hear that and certainly supportive of all the efforts you're making on this thing, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I see we have a raised hand. Jennifer?
Councilman White, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Chair through you to Eric. Eric, I appreciate the fact that you're being proactive in, in trying to promote a culture of safety because I think that's something that all of us have been concerned about for quite some time, seeing that, that spike and then leveling off at a high level. for quite some time, seeing that spike and then leveling off at a high level or a high number of claims that we've seen for the last couple of years. So that is concerning, and so I'm glad that you're being proactive and kind of developing some strategies to mitigate that. I appreciate that effort. One question, sir, and Mr. Royball alluded to it. So 200 cars last year, we can probably anticipate that number to rise once the ordinance that was passed takes effect. How do you reconcile the number of tows that we are making and probably will continue to make with the lot that we have? How, can you explain how that's going to work and what obstacles may be occurring with the increase, expected increase, I should say?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman White. Councilman White, just for a point of clarification, we don't utilize the city tow lot for those vehicles. As you may recall, we went out for an RFP a little over a year ago, maybe almost two now, I think it's been a year, though. And we went and looked for towing companies that could manage to tow the vehicle as well as store the vehicle until the time had expired. They also do all the title work when that time has expired for the owner to pick the vehicle back up if they would so choose to. And so those individual organizations or companies are towing, storing, and doing the backside work. Anytime someone does reclaim a vehicle, they pay the tow bill directly back to the City of Cheyenne. We recapture those dollars. Most often, they don't pick up those vehicles, but those vehicles are then sold by them or disposed of by them. Again, once we go out and do the investigation and we make the determination as to the process of which that vehicle will go through, that is the final step for us. The towing company handles it from there, sir.
I appreciate that clarification. That's probably, through you, Mr. Chair, I apologize. That's probably a story that needs to be told and explained a little bit more because I think some folks might be confused about that. But I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything further, Jennifer? Why don't you continue, Mr. Fountain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we'll take a glance now at the nuisance violations. This is a very interesting tale here. If you look at the 3,625 cases, these were primarily managed by two employees. We did finally hire our third person here in the last 60 days, and they've gotten them through some training and we're moving in that direction. But again, this is what lends to that conversation when you talk about cross-training and cross-pollinating against multiple divisions. Our risk and safety officers, our nuisance and vagrancy work together. Myself, at times we've had to use animal control officers, we work as a total team. So when you look at handling these types of cases, the primary success comes from two, but most often is supported by the entire department. The 3,625 cases demonstrate that the weeds and grass continues to be the number one. Mr. Brooks from the Board of Public Utilities just shared that they're anticipating less rainfall this summer. So unfortunate to the water table and to us that do water, it will be most helpful if we don't have a lot when it comes to the weeds. The next biggest one is the junk and trash. This is from refrigerators to couches to TV sets that people just put out and then we end up cleaning it up. Noncompliant vehicles were 380. And so when you look at those, those are your top three, but we have shrubs and bushes, no violation observed, obstruction, vagrancy, miscellaneous appliances, snow, et cetera. And so I'm going to have Paul go to our next, which is our code enforcement map. And I think this demonstrates that these are the only, when you see the circles, these are actual violations that were written. These are not the calls that were reported that did not come to fruition because there was no violation. So as you can tell, it's not a Ward 1, it's not a Ward 2, and it's not a Ward 3. It's a citywide, one-city, one-standard operation. It has to happen that way. If we want to get the community where everybody is in the compliance mode and everybody is living by the city code, this is what they have to understand. And so these numbers, and when you look at it, it's amazing. I'm often asked, you know, get more people, get more work done. Sometimes more people doesn't constitute more work. We're still limited with the type of equipment that we have. We have to rely heavily on CRE to give us some of their equipment, heavily on Public Works. The fortunate thing within our department, we have two individuals that are certified to operate trash trucks, so they can drive the trash trucks for us and they can help us out doing that. We have folks that can operate front loaders and Bobcats, so we only need the equipment, we don't need the staffing. And so we rely heavily upon those other divisions. Forestry has been a lifesaver for us. They've helped us do a larger project that we've had. We've also helped them with funding as well out of our dangerous line item to help pay for tree removal within the right-of-way. And so it really comes down to, although it's my budget, it is also the team's concept, it's also the networking of the other departments and divisions. They really are supportive of what we do, and we appreciate that. One of the pieces that we did take on this year was the billing. So it seems unusual because what we do is we get the constituent concern, then we have to go out and do the investigation. We make a determination if we're going to give them the courtesy letter or if we're going to do the straight violation. Do the courtesy letter, you've still got 15 days, then you've got the mailing and return on each side. Then you have the actual violation. Now you're sitting at 30 days. So it comes in and you go out, you investigate, and with each one of those expirations of letters requires another investigation because perhaps they are coming into compliance. And that is the ultimate goal. The ultimate goal by the courtesy letter, by design, is to get them to come into compliance so that we don't have to do the violation letter. Then at that time, if they don't come into compliance, that is when we do third-party towing, that is when we do the abatement process if we have to. And then we come back and we bring it to the point of billing. And we now handle the 30, 60, and 90-day-end billing. As you can see, we billed out $90,605.76 for 109, and the amount received back so far is $24,086. We waived $2,252, and we sent to collection $6,430. So there's a lot of people still out there that need to pay the City of Cheyenne for the services that have been provided to them. But again, it keeps us living in a nomenclature where things are understood, where public health, public welfare, and public safety come first. And so that is also how we sometimes prioritize our cases. There has been some conversation within the community that we just didn't get there fast enough. Well, sometimes we have to go to the larger ones first because they are the biggest problem, and the public health and safety is of the most importance. That is how we make decisions. We don't make decisions based on which one's the smallest and which one's the biggest. We decide which ones have to be taken care of on the emergent and immediate need. The last piece we'll talk about will be the vagrancy. It ties on to the same type of conversation. As you can see on this map, again, it's not a Ward 1, it's not a Ward 2, it's not a Ward 3. It is a one-city issue. And it's 106 cases. Now, that seems like a very small number, but when you look at 106 cases, these are severe cases, severe camps. These are not one-day cleanups, these are not a few-hour cleanups, these are days of cleanup. And we are well aware that there's other areas that still need to be approached and taken care of, but we do the very best that we can with the services and the tools that we have and the staffing that we have. But currently, there are 106 cases that we have solved, and we feel very confident in eradication of the unhomed population, and we continue to work on that each and every day. And for that, I would stand for questions on this section.
Mr. Escabel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Director Fountain. Recently, Ward 3 decided to use some of our contingency money to have a free trash day at the transfer station. And I'm hoping that it helps alleviate a little bit of the problems you're experiencing. I think Ward 1 has decided to join us in that. I'm not sure, no? But like you said, it's a city problem. And I'm interested to see what the effects of doing something like this will have on that problem.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear a question there, Mr. Escabel, but I do think that anything that we can do as a community to be proactive in these types of situation is most beneficial. Understanding that, I understand the Public Works Director's position in terms of not providing a free service when everybody else pays for a service. But I also understand that we demonstrate, we see it every single day, illegal dumping, things where people just didn't go to the transfer station or landfill and they dump it. Some of the larger areas that we do have to maintain and man are not on this list at all, and I don't want to put a spotlight to it only to discourage and somebody else taking advantage and dumping there. But I will tell you that when we go, it's usually a full-day cleanup. By the time we get it all cleaned up, it looks like an alternative landfill. And we have two that are city-owned property that we're aware of, that we monitor and clean all the time, and it is a significant cleanup, well in excess of two dump truck loads each and every time.
Well, Mr. Chair, through you, I'm not sure how we're going to measure it, but probably by the end of that weekend, we'll have some sort of a idea of really what, I don't know, by the weight or the number of people that actually come into the transfer station that day, or if that's trash that would have ended up on city streets or in city lots, we don't know. But I think it is taking a proactive way of trying to deal with a little bit of that problem. So we'll see what those statistics are, if we can get any data on it, but I think it's a wait-and-see thing.
Concur.
I see a raised hand. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Councilman White, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Director Fountain. Eric, can you talk about your comment that you just made? Can you talk a little bit about the fact that you have to do two dump trucks of pickup on trash that's located on city-owned property? So when, are the perpetrators of that identified? And since they are committing those acts on what property that the city owns, are they penalized at all? Are they cited? How, can you talk about how that works, please? Because the fact that, you know, just using myself as an example, if I take my trash and I just throw it all over the pocket park that's by my house and then just leave it for the city to clean up, that's, I mean, that's pretty disappointing and a complete lack of pride, I think, in the community on those people's parts.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman White. The simple answer is yes, sir. We do our best to try to find anything that would lead to a person that probably would have littered illegally or dumped illegally on city property. But what we do is turn it over to the police department. And this is probably a good time to segue into, one of the questions that came from Dr. Rennie yesterday, I believe yesterday, to Judge Singleton, as well as a conversation I've had with Dr. Emmons and the other fine folks from Ward 2, and then to answer this question in regards to littering. I think one of the things that we've kind of discovered over the last couple of weeks in having conversation with the judge and also looking at the city prosecutor and talking to them, was that you're talking about a civil penalty versus a criminal penalty. And I'm learning a little bit about this as we navigate these conversations and how we want to move forward with this. But when we look at individuals that are noncompliant with building codes, individuals that litter on city property, individuals that don't have proper licensure for their business or operating a home business without that licensure, it lends more to a civil process, a civil crime, if you will. So it's not a crime, it's a civil process, a civil failure within the individual. When you look at criminal matter and criminal nature, those are speeding tickets, things like that. And so I think when we take this conversation further with Councilman Laborne and anybody else who wishes to attend, Dr. Emmons, Dr. Rennie, Mr. Seagrave, we're going to follow back with a memo here shortly and some of our thought processes and requests, but really is starting to really move more towards a civil penalty and having an office administrator or a hearing administrator preside over those cases and then move that forward. I think that that's probably what we're looking at. So to give the simple answer, yes, in the past, we referred those people to the police department if we had it. But a lot of times, it's couches, TVs, and appliances, and it's a ton of it. I don't know where it comes from, but TVs and appliances just don't last like they used to. If you've got an old gold refrigerator downstairs with a beer fridge, I will tell you that you'll probably be there after you sell the house, but the new stainless steel you bought last year, we'll probably pick it up in the landfill.
Any further questions? Well, I have a couple, Mr. Fountain. I'm thinking of the Box Culvert under Missile Drive next to the Miranda and Concrete. And having participated in that last cleanup, which was, of course, partial because it was difficult to get down in the box itself, are you going to need assistance to do some, something more than cleanup and really find a way to improve both the access and the, I mean, obviously, that access would be for cleanups as well as enforcement, but are there other options that we could look at so that we could deal with that? Because that has been a problem area since I was a kid, and it just has no access and it just, I haven't been over there lately, but it's hard to believe it could get worse, but I guess it could. What kind of assistance do you need to deal with that?
So, Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, the big piece there is, for us, is engineering. We don't, we have done the best that we can to maintain as much as we possibly can. The Box Culvert is a very large project. We'll be happy to participate in that, much like we've done with Miranda and Concrete, that cleanup, the First Street cleanup, O'Neill cleanup, all of them. All of them require networking and teamwork from all departments within the City of Cheyenne. The Box Culvert itself, we've got, by design, it's very difficult to access, as you've already identified. It's even more difficult to figure out how to get the equipment in there to really clean it up. There's a lot of silt buildup in the bottom of it, so the water doesn't really stream through those all the way, and that's where they've shored up their, the unhomed has made their home, if you will. And so the challenge is getting in there and getting that cleaned out and then looking at that mitigation. I've had that conversation with the mayor and the city engineer. They're in support. I believe they are in conversation with their now stormwater drainage department. But for us, it's just an impossible feat for us to go in there and try to get it out. We would have no way to remove the silt. And then by design, I don't know how we will keep individuals out of there. That's a great question.
Well, it's one that I hope we can focus on because you mentioned First Street, where joint effort with forestry, Ward 1 contingency money, the neighborhood, has really ended the situation where that camp, which was the original effort cleaning it up, is now gone and not to return. So that's a really, I know we're appreciative and the people that live there are very appreciative. I will say that I think that the city has some serious considerations here of, and I'm, of course, familiar with our drainage engineer and his efforts, but this is immediate. And if that event occurs, and it very well might on that large watershed up above Crow Creek, you'd be sending materials and contamination down that creek that I believe would be very dangerous. On another nearby issue, the home over here across the street from the Commons, the boarded-up property, what's the situation with it? I mean, is that, now that you boarded it up, I guess that that's pretty much your responsibility, but the further process is a concern.
So, Mr. Chairman, to answer your question on that particular piece of property, the owner had passed away, it went through probate. The people who have inherited the property are in the process, working in conjunction with their attorney, to sell the property. We've had, we have taken boards off to allow a lot of folks to go and tour that piece of property. As far as I know, they are in the bid stages for them to sell that piece of property. Most of what's considering it is a multifamily opportunity, looking at converting it into multiple apartments in that home. But it's where it currently sits today. We are waiting for the sale, and then they will make the city whole, and let's hope for a great tenant. And let's hope for a great tenant.
And so many, how many similar properties are you dealing with now? It seems like as valuable as a property is, once they start sliding, they can really go far. And I do want to mention and appreciate all the properties that have been restored and dealt with. But how many problem, I'm thinking of Foxcroft. There are just a number of them out there that just, do we need some further legal authority or direction? Is it just, is there any way that we can deal with this in a more expeditious manner? I mean, some of these have gone on for years and years and years.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you and back to the council, because I think that's a question of the entire council. We right now have probably approximately about 10 properties that we know of. The one you referred to on Foxcroft is probably one of the more severe ones. We have another one in a development that's less than 15 years old and the house is completely boarded up. Some of the challenges are absent owner. Some of the challenges are foreclosed property and banks have lost their paperwork in order to foreclose. We have a couple of them that the owners are making decisions on what they're going to do and they are moving, like you've indicated. We are seeing a large amount of those moving into a more habitable opportunity. So they're being sold and renovated and moving in that direction. But there are a few that need dire attention. So most recently, we celebrated a win, and we don't do that very often, as you like to point out, that we had a house that we demoed in the first year of the Blight Initiative under Mayor Orr's administration. That property finally has went through the entire process. The foreclosure is complete and the city of Cheyenne now owns the land that the home used to reside on. Demolition is complete, the asbestos abatement was complete. But it is a navigation and now we have a template to work from. We did not have a template to work from in the past. Mr. Brody and his team have brought that finally across the finish line. And so it's a good example of what can be done in a community. There's been some conversation about a land bank opportunity. There's been conversation about, you know, do we just dispose of it and then put the money back into another opportunity? But I think everybody on this governing body and this administration understands the importance of the public health, welfare, and safety of the neighborhoods. And so we'll continue to work forward on those. They are difficult process to navigate, as you pointed out. And they are very timed, they are very burdensome when it comes to time. People are afforded property rights even in their absence, even in their death, and even in the foreclosure. And so because of the way it is written, the way the laws are written and the way foreclosure practices and principles operate, it does take time. And for our own boarding up a property, you know, we have our time. We have our windows that we have to adhere to. And so complicated matters are complicated times. And unfortunately, I wish I had a magic wand and can wave it and get people to sell, as you pointed out, great values for properties in Laramie County and the city of Cheyenne right now. It just doesn't work like that. And some of those people just will not compromise. It's very unfortunate. But we are working on it and we now have a template, sir.
Thank you. Well, I certainly appreciate how the nuisance considerations of a few years ago have really escalated in how unhoused individuals leave material. So, and certainly, I really appreciate the help we've gotten on the no camping along the creek and the efforts that your department has made. I very much look forward to assisting when you get over there to Missile Drive. That one, I brought it up for a reason. We can't let that continue, it's been that way too long. So, but it is a matter of personnel, training, and going out and dealing with some really ugly, nasty stuff. So certainly, I compliment your department in that regard. And thank you very much. If there's no further questions, I believe this meeting is...
Nope, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute, I think there is a further question. Is there?
Oh, there's no further question, he just has more departments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I still have two divisions to cover, sir.
What?
Sorry, I apologize. You got a lot of questions. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to move through them rather quickly here.
Sure.
One of them is going to be the information technology and I've asked Mr. Nelson to join us today. But I think his budget's pretty cut and dry. And I think it speaks to the services that they provide to the city of Cheyenne and kind of how it works. Within the packet that I provided to you guys, it talks about continued to complete fiber projects, IT helping bring the gymnastics facility onboard with fiber opportunity, working to phase out old phone systems. And that's one of the requests within that budget, is to phase those out. We went from ShoreTel to Mitel and then now we're moving into Ring Central. And I'm super excited about this opportunity because as technology evolves, sometimes it's difficult to move in a direction where it makes sense. But this one really made sense. It is expensive, but it's going to give us the ability to utilize some of the cellphones that we pay for, to actually people's desk phones and to be able to utilize that as a primary point of contact versus having to buy big-dollar phones and cellphones. Some of them, though, will have to be replaced with desk phones because they do utilize them. And when you look at what we're moving into and moving through, they just have met their life expectancy. And so that's why you'll see that request. If I jump over to the budget changes, it's professional services, $500 to hire a contract assistance for the phone migration opportunity. We're allocating $160,000, including 60 for one-time hardware expenses and $100,000 again for the Ring Central. We're looking at the increase, $39,000 to pay NetVault and Office 365 Cloud for backup maintenance. We also have the multi-factor authentication process. That's not cheap, that has to be covered as well. And then we look at the equipment increase of $22,000 to support server, network switch, and storage infrastructure upgrades. Again, Mr. Nelson and his team do a fantastic job. I'm very lucky to have the IT folks and the building folks that I have because I will not lie to you, vagrancy, homelessness, animal control, and risk management takes a lot of our time. But these folks really ensure they communicate effectively. They're strong supporters of what we have going. If you look at the number of tickets provided, they had 2,232 tickets that went out. Some of the categories are software, being 652, hardware being 346, and 206 for network. Goes all the way down to phishing emails, office applications, and workplace. I will tell you that your mayor does a fantastic job on having open-door communications again with cybersecurity. He has continued to always welcome that and he often asks us if we have enough coverage. Do we feel that what we're doing is meeting the metrics that are set nationally in terms of where we're at? Tyler and Dustin participate on the cyber committee with Warm, so they're doing that. They've been actually featured in some national publications, if you will, in terms of the work that they do. And so I know sometimes people think that they're software magicians or sometimes that they're people that should be helping out with new technology being purchased that they have never seen before. But they're spending a lot of time on infrastructure and staff, and their site development, their staff development, and then overall, just how they continue to bring that network together. It would cost a lot of money if we outsourced that. So that's the IT in a nutshell and I would stand for questions. And I know I went through that very fast, but we only have two minutes for animal control.
Any questions? Okay.
And now, finally, animal control. And I have to tell you, I'm very proud of these people. They, the turnover rate in this department is minimalist. And the two that did turnover, one was because her spouse was military and they relocated. The other one, her spouse is in Loveland, Colorado, and she was here and she wanted to be home a little bit more with him. And I understand that. And so those darn spouses keep running interference in my operation. But outside of that, I will tell you that I'm very, very pleased with this operation. As you know, we are a city-county operation serving both Laramie County unincorporated areas. And we also back up because we do the same thing that EMA does when it comes to a severe case in Burns, Albin, Pine Bluffs. We provide support to those people. So the city of Cheyenne had 4,165 cases. The county had 1,240 cases. When you look at what the largest number was, it's dog-at-large. And I know Mr. Seiggrave often says, "Why are we going and getting those dogs?" And I've started to ask the same question because when I look at the budget that we have and I look at the services that we can provide and the time structure that we provided in, 1,400 at-large dogs seems to be a lot to me. But we are working on that and respectfully, these people are very dedicated. This is a very large operation in terms of the number of staff that we have. But the staff does a fantastic job delivering on that. We're heading into our busiest times, so right now, there's some burnout rates. But then we have other six months out of the year when we're very thankful. We can reflect back to some of the pitchers that we work on and some of the things that we have to navigate in those processes. And I will tell you that you'd be hard-pressed to find people that would deliver this type of service model to a community of this size and to a county of this size with a continued success rate that they have. Their number one is education. And when you hear about their certifications, being able to achieve that and pick these kind of numbers off and provide those types of services, it's amazing. And I'm very grateful for all of them. And I guess in closing, my thoughts would be this. I'll stand for any questions for any of that we have. But I think that the data speaks for itself. I think that the staffing levels speak for itself and what we do. And I think that what you all have done as the governing body and this administration, we are most thankful and we appreciate all you do for us.
Anything else? Okay, well...
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.